I would happily move that we adopt the minutes from the previous meeting.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing, planning commission, city council, joint session, planning discussion item decree. Planning commission update for council.
Yes, so first of all, I want to thank Susan Peters for her letter and I wanted to clarify what this this item is about. This is really meant to be a discussion about process. We're going to have a joint session between the planning commission, the city council, on March 3rd. And the idea was to use this meeting for you guys to kind of discuss how you feel about process. How you feel about as a majority among yourselves, so that you can share that with the council when we go to the council meeting. You know, in hindsight, I probably shouldn't have mentioned the two projects. This is not about specific projects. It's really about kind of our city processes and the priorities that the council is going to set. So we've been doing an annual priority setting meeting early in the year. That's going to happen in February. And then you guys have, you have a quasi judicial role, role as you look at projects. You also have an advisory role in terms of city zoning and planning. And this is really more about that advisory role and just having a discussion. So there were some sample questions there. You know, some of it is about kind of pace of growth and how people feel about that. Other things are like, in terms of the planning process itself, are you guys getting the information you need to evaluate projects? The length of time it's taking to process projects. You know, time, time is money and when we take a year or longer to review a project, it's costing somebody money which may kill a project. And, you know, if that's, you know, you're supposed to process it, you know, in an unbiased way. But, you know, how, what, the, the structure of our processes can have an impact on outcomes. So I do hope you guys came prepared and have some thoughts. And ideally, I don't think we need to be as formal as you guys trying to write a, a letter. But I think if you guys agreed to some points that you wanted to discuss with council, that, that would be helpful. So I'll stop there.
Well, yeah, I think, I know the one thing that I was concerned about is we had, we had the general plan update and we got a grant to do some zoning things. And then we were told, don't do too much because the grants do. And there were a lot of cleanup I think we need to do in zoning and we didn't get to it. And we have properties that are zoned commercial that really have no business being commercial. They don't have the infrastructure to support commercial. And we could take a look at those. That's just one item. I, I, I.
So you're talking about the zoning map, but also some of the details of the zoning regulations?
Yeah, and we. Yeah.
Cleaning up the, what's on the map, for example, maybe that Greenstone Terrace property that's zoned commercial.
Right.
That really couldn't fit a commercial.
Right.
Use up there. Okay.
And, you know, we have properties on Eureka Street just past the foundry that's zoned commercial. There's no way you can support commercial development there.
But one thing we have been talking about is zoning code cleanup, things that are either confusing or contradictory.
Oh, yeah, I mean, and I mean, as far as length of processing an applicant, we, we don't even get it. We don't even know what's going on. I mean, if you've got an applicant that's been a year in the process, the reason why they're in the year in the process is they don't have a complete application, I assume. So is that the city's fault or is it the applicant's fault?
Depends.
What's that?
I think it may, may depend on the situation.
Oh, okay. I mean, it doesn't even get to the planning commission. How can we be a roadblock of something that hasn't even come to us? And then, you know, I started thinking, you know, I've lived here for thirty-six years. And I, I was either on the planning commission, worked on the general plan in nineteen ninety, approved the Powderhouse subdivision, probably worked on Crestview Two was a map. Golden Hills was approved and probably in the interim when I was on the planning. And it didn't develop all the way out. Gold Rush was approved for fourteen hundred and forty homes, a golf course, a resort. And to be, to state that we're not, we're anti-growth with all the stuff we have developed, I mean, potentially could develop tomorrow with a map, is kind of laughable, you know, so.
Yeah, it wasn't really meant to be anti-growth, pro-growth. It's really just, yeah. Where do you guys think we are?
I don't, I, I think every applicant, every application that comes in stands on its own merit, you know? And it, and if it mitigates its impacts and if it's an in, I'm really big on infill. I didn't support the Gold Rush annexation because there were all these other properties in fill. Maybe it would be good, your newer staff, to look at the inventory of what we have in Sutter Creek right now. That could develop, that no one's ever come forward with a map or a project.
I mean, it's, it's up to the property owners, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, you're right. And, and if there's this big demand, and then the other thing I thought about is we're, we're driving everything on impact fees. I talked to a gentleman that was working on a house, he's a contractor. And he was looking for a duplex lot and I knew there was one on Patricia. It was listed for a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And I go, hey, did you look at that lot? Do you think about building a duplex on it? And he said it would take two hundred thousand dollars in impact fees before I can pound a nail. I think that kind of discourages growth right there. That's kind of an anti-growth thing. And as you go through your mitigation fees, you're driving those costs higher and higher. And there won't be any development because it's too expensive to develop. It's great for us to have our own houses right now because the values can keep going up because you can't afford to break ground on a new project. But I, I don't think, I don't know that discussion. I mean, every, I think the biggest thing that kind of came to a head was, was the Golden Hills thing. Because it was, it, it seems so, on paper, so easy to just approve the other side of the street. But it was also an annexation. And are we going to continue to, that's my philosophy. I'm just stating my philosophy. Are we going to continue to annex when we have all this undeveloped ground that no one wants to build on for whatever reason? I don't know. I mean, it's all economics and, and we, we, you've, you've, you've done projections on collecting mitigation fees and how we're going to pay for these long-term improvements, capital improvements. And I'm going, you can, you can do that pencil exercise and you can have ground that's zoned for development, but they may not come. You may not collect one dime in mitigation fees.
And we're doing this nexus study, you know, an outcome could be the lower impact fees. It's.
You know, I made comments on the nine thousand dollar recreation fee and I'm in the parks and recreation. But I thought that was outlandish. It was way too high for, for asking, someone wants to build a house, got to pay nine thousand dollars for mitigation fee. And then you've got the water agency charging thirty, thirty-six thousand dollars for a hookup. I don't, I know you can give financial consultants all kinds of information and they'll generate numbers for you. And then you can charge it for people and you can, oh, we did a nexus study and we did all our stuff. But it's still, people are upset about that. And that leads to non-development as well. We'll get off.
I mean, just from like a concrete perspective, one of the questions was about like signage approval and going, and that, I think that should just go directly to city council. I think that could streamline, you know.
We've been trying to do that for.
Like sign permits instead of coming to you, go to city council or to planning, just the planner?
Planner, planner's fine.
Ministerial. We've been asking for that for six, seven years.
I don't think any of them have ever been rejected.
No, I don't think so.
Or even discussed.
There's discussions a few years ago that were a little outside of the size. And so if they go outside of the size.
Yeah.
Well, then they'd be asking for a variance.
That's a variance, yeah.
Then that makes sense. But most of the time I see the sign up before they leave and see it.
See it, right.
Which I don't blame them. I mean.
Right, no.
In the, in the history of that, we, the planning commission worked on upgrading the ordinance. And I think it was triggered by a lawsuit. Church wasn't allowed to put a sign up.
Yes.
And we go, okay, we're going to clean our ordinance up and now it's all good to go. And I don't know if you, Frank Cunha was on the, we had a different planning commission back then. And it was like, okay, council, run with it.
So I should know, but do we have design guidelines for the sign or is it just size?
It's sized, my knowledge.
So like if somebody puts up a neon light downtown.
No, neons aren't allowed.
Yeah, it has to be like aesthetically, yeah.
Within historic district.
It's, it's all in the, it's all in that draft sign ordinance.
But saying that.
Didn't, didn't go forward.
The gas station has a neon sign. I know there was this neon sign at the physical, or the, the workout place at the end of town too, that we asked them to get rid of.
There, so like signs that have lighting are not allowed.
But it could be any not let sign during design.
I, I.
You can have them lit from a.
Light.
Not from behind.
Yeah, not from behind. Gas stations have a different, because the, the, like, the prices are always lit up.
So anyway, we went, we went through the ordinance. It never, at that time, Amy Gedney was the city manager. For some reason, she didn't want it to go through and it never went through. Council wasn't pushing for it. And our recommendation at the time, I think it would be this.
Still.
I mean, what, it's silly. If they meet all the guidelines, why does it come to us?
If they're asking for a variance, it's a different.
Yeah, I mean, if they want to build something bigger and neon or something, then it should go.
I would say the majority of the sign permits that have come in the last two years have been along here. So I do think that there is some special attention to be given to those. But all of, not a single one that has come through has been out of style with what is allowed.
And I, I don't know the design review, they don't.
They do not.
So why don't we, I'd love to hear from everybody. Andrea, did you have any other?
Well, one of the other questions was about Airbnb approvals. And I definitely think those should be coming to the planning committee. Seems like most Airbnb requests have community input. And so I'd like to see that platform still exist.
We did have a discussion with council about the short-term rentals. We, I think they, they wanted to see some additions for safety. And then they were kind of pretty, pretty split on setting a new limit. So, you know.
I know we're getting close, aren't, aren't they?
We were close there. So there, several of them were talking about just raising the threshold because it seemed to be working pretty well.
Right.
And then we ended up with requiring insurance and having a safety plan.
And, and basically, and one of my other things with short-term rentals is looking at it from a density percentage. And so basically, if you end up with a street where, you know, four houses out of ten are short.
We talked about that. They didn't really go that direction, but.
That concerns me quite a bit. So, yeah, but those were like my own, I mean, beyond that, from, you know, just kind of a growth plan. I mean, personally, I would love to see development projects that focus on more like community type living situations, smaller developments, smaller houses, community resources, things like shared gardens, that kind of thing. Because there's a lot of people that the typical, you know, house that's designed for a family of four is just not really a viable way that they want to live. And so that's, you know, any, any way that we can maybe encourage that, I don't know.
So encourage more of a mix?
That would like to own a house, but they don't necessarily want to own a large house.
Well, a mix of housing, we, it's, it's like, well, when Golden Hills, they had CCNRs that had to be over twenty-two hundred square feet. We, we have, I know everyone wants over two or three or four thousand square foot home. But if they're not building any starter homes and then, you know, even if, even when we went through the Gold Rush specific plan, it was like, what are you going to do for affordable homes? Oh, someone else will take care of that somewhere else. No, every project needs to have that blended into it.
And those, and I don't think of those necessarily as starter homes. I think of them as smaller. I mean, it can still be like luxury living. It's just smaller. I mean, I just think we're going to see, I mean, like I said, as people get older and people that are single and people that don't tend to have kids, I mean, as you see people kind of embrace the idea of van life, there's a reason for that. There is a movement to have less stuff and less not be so anchored and to have more community and be more connected. And as the boomers and the Gen X, as we kind of, you know, step away, there's going to be a different drive, I think, for people to have smaller housing. So, and then of course, as we retire also. Right, which, which would be hopefully a natural.
Can I interject here? I feel like we've gone off script.
We might be off, yes.
Well, I, I feel like the core responsibility of the planning commission is to approve whatever comes before us according to the city code.
So those are certain types, that's what I'm saying. That's not your sole responsibility. That has been the practice here in Sutter Creek. And that's a quasi judicial role. You review a project against the ordinances. But you guys also have a role in helping shape the zoning and planning and, and our general plan. And this idea of like saying, well, we'd like to see more of a mix of housing, that's a policy issue. It's not a project issue. And, and I'd like to see you guys start to get more involved on, on the policy side as well.
As long as it's mentioned in this, because this goes into a very dangerous gray zone where we're rejecting potential developments based on opinion, not on what's allowable in.
So again, we're, this is not talking about a specific project. This would be like, should we change our zoning ordinances to encourage certain things?
I think, I think if you take some time to read the general plan, you'll see all that's in there.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It's, it's in there.
Plan, that kind of verbiage of what we're looking for, it's in there.
Yeah.
And you should be, because policy, policy should be tearing up at the general.
Yeah, but you're really right, though. This is not about a project and it would not be appropriate about a project. This is really this other role you guys have about policy.
What would streamline the approvals process? I know it's more background from me, but like last month when we reviewed the telecom tower, you know, that was a commercial property immediately adjacent to a site at risk of contamination. It would be nice upfront to provide in a docket, any environmental reports that are available that the client may have, whether it's sequer or not sequo. Especially if it is a sweet sequer determination, because you can't really determine the facts without those preliminary documents. So that would help, I guess, a bit more education on that.
I think, is there any way that we can get the agenda and all the documents earlier than like the Friday or the Thursday before the meeting? Is that a?
I thought, I, I've only been getting it out earlier than that usually.
Well.
I think they've been striving for a week.
We've been trying to do a week. I know this last one was not a week.
Okay, yeah, and it's just sometimes, you know, I don't always have the time to drive around and go look at everything, so.
Yep, that's fair.
But I also know how hard those are to put out. So, I mean, when, when you can, when.
And I feel like, and I, Erin, honestly, I feel like you're so thorough. And I know that you're not rushing through stuff when you're really paying attention to detail. Just very.
Or, or can we get a preview of anything or is that not allowed? I mean, like you mentioned something about there's a couple of projects coming up. Is that something we can get a?
Just one thing, I don't know if you guys, have you guys ever done, so once we accept the proposal, a, a pre-application? Like review with a planning commission?
Well, we did a little, we did that for Greenstone Terrace. They don't have enough, they didn't have a, they needed to do some redesign. We wanted some direction on that, so.
So it could be maybe an option if somebody wants to come for.
I don't know that you would really do that, because what would be the?
I mean, I've seen some cities do that, where they have questions and they want to get a sense before they do complete plans, if it's worthwhile.
Yeah, I mean, I think with a big, a big project, I mean, I think this is what we, we've been talking about a little bit. Asking for some council direction on certain policies or programs that are.
The one thing I caution on that is getting too much.
Yes.
Too much, too much time ahead of time and it starts influencing us before you can hear from the public.
Exactly. So you won't have, you wouldn't have all of your information. And you really can't make a decision until you have all of the information in front of you. All of the information also includes public testimony. So.
Exactly.
That can be done. And then to talk about the, I think with the lack of city clerk right now.
Oh.
Yeah, so we can keep working on getting, I think that's a big role for them.
Sometimes you send out a notice notifying the neighbors that this, a notice, a meeting's coming up. And they'll tell me and I don't know about it until I get the agenda.
Yeah, so, because that legally has to be out ten days prior to the meeting. And our agenda usually isn't ready, but it, it really should be because then your neighbors are coming to you and you're like, I don't even know what you're talking about.
Right.
So, I mean, we don't send the notices out until we know that the item is going to go. So it typically is pretty ready, the, the information for it. It just hasn't been compiled into the.
Are notices mailed out or are they? There's possibly just whenever a notice goes out, maybe it could go out to the council and the, and the planning commission at the same time? Even just by email? I don't know if anybody else.
I mean, I think we should just really work on getting our agenda packets out.
Because otherwise you're just going to notice that something's happening on this.
Right.
This, and it's like, well, what is it?
Because I see, because I see people get their notices and then it pops up on like the social media stuff and I'm like, what are you talking about?
I mean, so, but that actually would end up slowing down the process.
Exactly.
Yeah. Because everything would have to be ready before that, ten days. And oftentimes, it's like, I know the application is complete. I have everything I need to go to planning commission and I'm putting the finishing touches on my staff report. So that's like the opposite.
Otherwise you'll have to bump it because it's not ready.
Yes, it's like get it totally ready and then.
Month later.
Yeah.
And it's the newspaper thing, you have to go to the newspaper and you have to submit it on the Monday, that it goes in on the Friday. It's a whole, so it adds an extra four days to it.
Yeah, okay.
So it's a balancing act of like trying to be as efficient as possible, timely, quick.
Right.
But.
I think Susan wants to say something.
Susan, do you have some comments?
Yeah, if it's okay. Thanks. So first of all, I'm, I'm kind of cracking up about the, the timeline. Because when I was on the planning commission in the nineties, we had the same complaints about getting the packets. A lot of times I didn't get the package till Monday morning and the meeting was Monday night, so, so I get that frustration. In terms of project evaluation in advance of the actual planning entitlement hearing, that would not be recommended and somebody said you're going to, you're setting yourself up for prejudice there. You should be hearing, in a public hearing, the project de novo. That being said, there is a process whereby you can look at applications altogether. So for example, the city of Jackson has what's called a priority, a constraints and priority allocation process where it's been suspended and it's probably, is it still being suspended?
Yeah.
Where back in the early two thousands, when there was multiple subdivision applications coming all in at one time, the planning commission and the city council worked on a policy to, to have applicants submit their applications in a window of time. So any, any subdivision that was over ten lots had to submit in the first part of the year. And then it went to the planning commission and then the city council. Planning commission looked at it. I kind of called it a beauty contest at the time. And it was, the idea was to see what amenities these applications had and preliminarily not approve them or anything, but just if they were substantially compliant with what was, what the vision and the goal of the city was. And it started with a dashboard look at the city's constraints, you know, what are our roads capacities, where are our schools at? You know, what's air quality like? What's, you know, we covered everything. And, and said, yes, we, we can, we think, you know, would be between water, wastewater, traffic, schools, everything, we can accommodate this amount of growth. And you can apply for that. And then depending on the amenities that you're offering, will allow you to continue in the application process. That was the policy that was created to kind of control what was the amount of applications that were coming in and to weed out applications that weren't really serious and that weren't, that were clearly going to be detrimental because we didn't have the resources to support them. So that's a policy consideration that the planning commission can talk to the city council about, if that's something you're interested in. In Sutter Creek, my opinion is you don't have that massive drive right now for development. And with the economy, the way it is right now, chances are you probably won't see that for a while. But that is something to consider. The other thing, when you're talking about potential policies that the planning commission can work on, the city of Sutter Creek recently adopted its housing element. You guys are all familiar with it. There's a lot of implementation measures in that that could, can be looked at that will drive some need for some additional policies. And Erin's nodding because she knows. And we, we as planners in the county are meeting on a regular basis to, because the, the housing element was done as a, as a regional housing element. It was the county and all five cities. So the, all of us planners are meeting on a regular basis to come up with kind of consolidated implementation plans for some policies that need to be changed in the future at, at one or more of the jurisdictions. So that's another avenue of, of policy development that I think the planning commission could get involved in, so.
How many, yep, do you, do you all go to the city council meetings?
I don't, I don't have time.
Do you?
They're in the same meeting.
Go to city council meetings?
If there's something on there, I find it. But most of the time, I usually will.
I typically haven't, but that certainly might be something where, you know, that helps or not to.
I mean, if, yeah, if we got busy and there were more projects, I've seen cities where they will send, rotate it among the planning commission. And the planning commissioner will go to the council meeting when that project goes to council. And they can answer questions about what the planning commission talked about and kind of, and again, they're not there for their own opinion. They're, they're there to represent the whole planning commission. But again, it only makes sense if there's a project. And Tommy, we haven't heard much from you or Lucy. I don't know if you had more.
No, I don't. I just quickly reviewed the, the list. I'm still relatively new, but from what I've seen, there are areas of improvement in the, the codes. But I know that's actively being reviewed and looked at. So I don't have any additional comments.
Yeah, Mike and myself are kind of in agreement. It's mainly the sign permits, the sign, unless it's a variance. I don't, I'd like that to go be smoother for everyone. I, I often see signs out there before I see even the application. Which isn't anything from you guys. It's just process. So as much as we can clean that up, I guess. But for short-term rentals, I'd really like to kind of, we kind of tried to kick it to the city when it was, but there were only like five of them. But now we're already hitting that number that we said we should review after that, after twenty. And I think what we're at. And I think we're, we're at nineteen, so it, I'd like to see, keep seeing those kind of come before us and kind of see what the community feels about each individual one. And then you kind of look at it, each individual one too. It's, the city is really not much of a cookie cutter, so it's kind of hard not to, to put a very, or a set number out there because it's so dependent on everything.
Right, because we weren't sure if some of them were active or not.
Yeah, and that is hard. But are you going to take it away because they're using them? I mean, it's, it's something we've given out, so.
All right.
And they pay a fee every year for them?
Or they're supposed to be taxed, yeah.
I mean. So I mean, if they're paying us.
You know, what about the, uh, home business?
What about it? Just in general, the license process, you mean?
Well, I, I can think of one that probably code enforcement is, the name, was it Eric Ward, the guy that has the residential lot that had a, probably had a, wanted to get a business license and then.
Oh, next to the cell tower site?
Yeah, that morphed into a junkyard.
I mean, yeah, that's, that's more a specific code enforcement issue.
But I mean, when we, when we get a, when we're going for a home business site, that's triggered a lot of times because they want to get a, a business license, right? Okay, do we, are we doing a good job evaluating the site before you issue a, a home business? Home occupation, sorry. I don't know what happened in that particular case.
Well, that, that, that was not, that's not a home occupation. They were.
It's a commercial site that they resided on?
Yes.
It's residential, it's a.
So when we get a home occupation permit, that's, we evaluate, you know, the application, ask that for discussion, we're deep site and in the house or accessory structure on the property.
And we're still reviewing those now.
Yes. No, planning permission's not status.
Yeah, that's right. Didn't see mine.
It's the process before, before it was a, like a site plan permit, which required a public hearing notice and you know, so your neighbors would get noticed. We're doing computer work at your desk.
Well, that's, that's kind of the way the short-term rentals turned into. We, we developed all the mitigations that were fairly standard that it made it hard to, well, you've issued eighteen of these.
Yeah.
And you, these standard mitigations, how could you possibly deny it? I mean, you voted against one.
Yeah.
And that was a good reason to, I don't know. But, you know, once you get to that point, then it almost becomes ministerial because you've got all these built in. It's almost like a ordinance. If you meet all the requirements of the ordinance, why are we? Sign permits, we then ask for that. I, I do think with the home occupancy, not the home occupancy, the short-term rental, there's still enough controversy out there. I think people want to come to a public meeting and vent a little bit and it kind of releases some of the tension, I think.
I get yelled at by my wife every single time. Long conversation every time.
And it's, that's another policy issue too, because you're going, trying to look at a mix of housing you want to have in the city. And if you go to have.
Right.
Short-term rental, you don't have other housing opportunities.
And, and I think you guys have done a good job. It's, you guys, we have an ordinance on the books. You guys have looked at that ordinance. It, you know, I guess if you were to arbitrarily vote one down, then that would, then it'd be like, okay, why do we approve these and not this one?
That's why that number twenty kind of reset that originally. As soon as you have fifty of them, then you don't have enough space.
You guys have talked about residential, maybe wanting to encourage more of a mix. Um, what about commercial growth? I mean, you think there's anything that we're doing? Well, first of all, you know, do we want to encourage more commercial growth?
You don't, you don't get any commercial applications.
Yeah.
I, I know.
I, I can't imagine.
I mean, you'd have to go for.
Ever denying a commercial application up at the Walgreens shopping center. It's zoned for it.
Yeah, I don't have any ideas in mind, but yeah, it's almost like you'd have to go the other way and create incentives.
Yeah, you have empty storefronts.
Right. Can we do anything about the empty storefronts?
So, uh, so, but the, one of the council members and I have been calling owners and just trying to make sure they're all aware, because some of them are absentee owners that.
Uh huh.
You know, that there's empty spaces, maybe their rent's too high, but you know, that's about all we can do is just kind of encourage them.
Oh, some of them have been empty for years. I guess they just, they don't care. They don't.
Yeah, it, it's, it's tough.
Colombian lady turned around. That's nice.
Okay, I mean, again.
Kind of on the commercial thing. I mean, I know someone in, I think it's Sonora, that has been looking for like a ten thousand square foot warehouse type setup, but he can't really find anything. Um, sort of like buying. And so, I mean, I don't know, but it, that kind of lends itself also to, we were saying about like storage units and that kind of thing. I mean, that kind of commercial, I mean, it wouldn't be, you know, like Main Street type of commercial, but.
It seems like what we're getting is RV storage.
Yeah, I think what we need are good jobs.
Yeah, he, he owns, he owns a machine shop. I mean, if somebody, you know, was looking for something specific and they came to the city, I mean, is there any room for, you know, any kind of work for that type of thing? I mean, I don't know. I don't know how that would start.
I mean, there's definitely places it could go, right? Mostly up at the top of the hill, but. So again, that, that list was kind of a starter list, but if you guys don't have anything else, I think we will kind of write up what we heard. I think we have time to bring it back to you guys before that joint meeting.
I do.
It's March third.
I just wanted to make note, though, that the packets to date are really well organized and I like that they reference the codes because being new to this, I don't know where all the codes are and it's nice searching it and reading up on the rules. So just wanted to say thank you for that, Erin. I find, I echo that.
Oh. Oh, that would be awesome.
That'd be wonderful.
Yeah.
Nice.
So, Tom, are you getting any feedback from the council that they're wanting us to do anything differently?
Uh, no, not necessarily.
Okay, okay.
So.
I just want to make sure I have my notes correctly. So things like zoning code cleanup, map cleanup, property setters own commercial that really shouldn't be, uh, impact fees. RV equipment driving the lack of development on a small scale. Wants to buy the one lot.
A single family.
And when a big developer comes in, they're.
Yeah.
I'll admit, I've looked at buying a parcel and to build on a parcel, it's a non-starter for a family.
Uh, rather see more infill development versus annexation.
Well, yeah, I think that's an issue for discussion, right? That was Mike's position.
That was, that was Mike's, yeah, sorry.
But I think it's a good discussion.
Yeah.
So I, I, it's that.
I don't see how we can enforce that. It's up to the individual owners. I wouldn't want to put an onus on that in any sort of planning document because it limits developers buying outside on land that's available.
It's in the general, it's in the general plan.
Yeah, so I think again, rather than state a position, let's state that as a discussion, that for, a topic for discussion.
So if it's based in the general plan, you can just ignore it?
No, I think again, if.
It, it's more infillism.
Sure, but this idea that, you know, it's all about who owns the property, what they want to do with it. If somebody has an infill lot, they want to develop it, excellent. But if somebody comes to us with a project that requires, and like the Broad Meadow one, it's partially in the city, partially not, I'm not sure that annexation should be a reason for rejection. I think that's a good topic for discussion to see where people stand on that.
But nor should history be a reason for rejection.
Well, I mean, developer accountability, I think, is something that, you know, I would definitely like to see.
Is that developer accountability or city not holding the developer accountable at the time? So.
Wait a second, is that chicken or the egg? Yeah. Uh, reevaluating sign permits in the process on that. Short-term rentals, we, the commission would still like to see those. And then to continue to encourage a variety of housing types, not just two thousand square foot houses on seven thousand square foot lots or over, your house has to be over certified, making sure we're having, uh, housing types.
And, and any programs in the housing element that need to be developed?
Yeah, so that's something we, we're working on as through the next, 2029.
Lucy, your point about developing on a lot, was that all about impact fees or were there other factors? It's this. Yeah. Yeah, I wanted to get all of that, particularly again, we, we can't control the water hookup and, yeah.
There weren't going to be any more water connections as well. Off that board.
Okay.
Do we, is there ever any pushback on the solar mandate for California with new housing? For builders, developers, homeowners?
What mandate?
Um, what it was, like twenty eighteen or, I don't know where they did the California solar mandate for new housing. It's basically, they have to have solar. I mean, does anybody, I was just curious, because I mean, I don't, I don't pay close enough attention to know when, you know, new houses are coming through, if the solar goes in seamlessly or if that's ever an issue for developers or new homeowners. Or do we, you know, do we, is that part of our requirements and keeping an eye on those and? Yeah, so that's something that, that, right?
Okay, thank you guys. It was good, good discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. It's still cold in here.
Hope the mic can adjourn the meeting.
We're adjourning the meeting, Mike?
What's that?
We're adjourning the meeting?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. The meeting is adjourned.